Meeting for Wednesday, March third, two thousand and twenty-one. Going to start the meeting right at seven and call it to order. And I'd like a quick roll call of the school committee members, please.
Thank you, Trania.
Ellie Grady, present.
Heather Moore, present.
Julie. Lisa Brown, present, and we will continue. When I skip over the pledge of allegiance and we do have student representatives, I think I saw one here definitely. From the middle school, Josh Smith and Jacob Wasson.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Wasson and I am here with Joshua Smith. I am currently in the eighth grade while Joshua is in the sixth grade. However, we are both a part of the Douglas Middle School Student Council. The month of February has been a fairly busy one with the arrival of our new principal, Mr. Olson. As we welcome him, we are also thrilled to be having a few, a few more new opportunities, including Lego Robotics and Band. Band started last week with Mr. Cars while the first Lego Robotics meet will take place tomorrow. In addition to this, we were overjoyed to celebrate Spirit Week before February break. Homerooms were able to participate in a collaborative game of movie-themed Jeopardy! As well as a winter-themed door decorating contest. Students were able to purchase candy hearts in the cafeteria as a way to bring in funds for the student council while boosting school spirit.
Currently, our sixth graders recently had a virtual tire box auction. The points system earned from good deeds and completed work, students were able to send their points and earn excited prizes prizes from candy to gift cards. In the spirit of Valentine's Day, our sixth, so it's a candy heart-themed math activity with fractions in Mrs. Knight's class. Up in seventh grade in Mrs. Walker's class, students are participating in a fun science bingo game, which allows students to be engaged in both entertaining and educational way. This allows them to be active in the games while also developing a better understanding of teamwork. Currently in Mrs. Hellstrom's class, math class, they have an upcoming algebra test which features multi-step equations.
February has been a busy month for our eighth graders as we dive deeper into our digital citizen unit in English Language Arts. In a very internet-based time, students have the opportunity to more thoroughly learn about how to be respectful and responsible when using technology. Additionally, students have particularly enjoyed picture book activities in Spanish. By associating Spanish vocabulary with corresponding images, students find it easier to interpret and remember the meanings of words.
As we enter to the new month of March, we're happy to celebrate Pi Day with amusing raffle. Students are able to just get to fifty cents each in order to be entered into a raffle to throw a pie our dean of students, Mr. Roni. Volleyball elections are out and a new season has begun. Currently, we are in the process of recruiting a team, but we can't be good. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Okay, oops, and I lost my screen. All right, we're going to be moving public comment and communication to after the back-to-school plan. Does anybody have any old business? If you do, you can raise your hand or speak out. Does anybody have any new business? Seeing none, before I hand it over, we're going to pull something out of the consent agenda. So some students don't have to hang around if they don't want to. And if the Disney people are here, now is your time.
My name is Sophia Scherer and I'm the class of two thousand and twenty-two president. My fellow class officers and I are here with our class advisor, Ms. Novicki, to obtain the committee's approval for our senior class trip to Disney in the year of two thousand and twenty-two. The graduating class trip to Disney is a tradition that has been deeply rooted in Douglas High School's history for the past twenty years and is one of extensive benefits that we hope you are willing to allow us to continue with our classroom.
We feel that there are a multitude of rewarding and beneficial aspects of this trip. Firstly, it allows us to get a glimpse of what college life might be like as we'll be away from home and sharing a room with three of our classmates, experiencing new responsibilities and learning how to navigate with independence. In like manner, the trip also gives us an opportunity to share a memorable last experience with people we've gone to school with our entire lives, informed strong connections and friendships with. We're aware that not all of our classmates will choose to go on this trip. However, some of us have never been to Disney World or even had the experience of flying on a plane. This trip would provide us with a magical experience to share with our friends and our teachers that we have developed such strong relationships with. By making this trip a school-sponsored event, we understand that the student handbook rules will apply at all times. This will serve as a reminder to combat senioritis and to continue to work hard in our classes and abide by the school rules. Of course, we'll all do this anyway, but allowing us to take this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity will give us the extra extent, will give us the extra incentive to continue to work hard through graduation.
There are other potential benefits that a trip to Disney World would provide to the class of two thousand and twenty-two as well. For instance, in just two of the four parks, Magic Kingdom and Epcot, there are countless attractions such as the Hall of Presidents, Liberty Bell, Riverboat, Living with the Land and the World Showcase that can teach and inform students of a variety of subjects such as American history, literature, sustainable farming practices, and world cultures. This is barely scratching the surface of the educational value a trip to Disney could supply. In fact, one Douglas High graduate was so impressed by the animatronics he saw in Disney that he went on to pursue a degree in electrical engineering and attend a master's program.
We understand that COVID nineteen is at the forefront of the decision-making process and we fully understand the planning and careful preparation that goes into executing a trip like this. But we also hope and anticipate that by the time this class trip will occur, the pandemic should hopefully be more under control and managed, more so than it is today, so we can ensure a safe and healthy trip. Additionally, Disney has taken several precautions and extensive safety protocols that set the establishment apart from any theme park in our area, proving how it would be even safer to attend a trip to Disney than any local establishment that has less stringent policies. Overall, Disney is an establishment that has spent large sums of money and time on resources to ensure the safety of its parkgoers.
Lastly, the junior and senior class advisors' costs will be covered by the students and we will inform the students and parents, so it will be included in the student price. We realize that the trip may be an issue for some students, but we have worked diligently for the past two years to fundraise for our class and plan to do so even more this year through fundraisers such as Working the Gillette fundraiser to help ease the costs. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight and we hope you'll consider approving this trip for us. If you have any questions, we will do our best to answer them.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the students?
I have a question that I'm not sure if the students can answer. Maybe Mr. Ramado can help out. I, first of all, I'm so impressed with all of you. That's sort of, that was like a dissertation on why it's good to go to Disney. It was really fantastic. So, yes, I mean, you have my full support. The question I have is, if there are health problems, something happens with Disney, how difficult was it for families to get refunded this past year? And is that something that we have any reason to have concern about?
I can actually speak to that. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Julie lived it. So yeah, why don't you go ahead, Julie, if you can speak to it.
No, no, you go ahead because it's a depressing topic.
Yeah, it was incredibly hard to get the refunds to people. It's just, you know, it kind of is that difficulty of us managing money for something in this sort of way. So it's just sort of a long process because it has to go through us and to town halls and through the bank and back. So it was kind of a long process. It's not an impossible process. It's cumbersome. It's a lot of paperwork that like Miss Keegan has to do and Elaine McDermott. And there's a long wait for parents to get that money back. But what's happened so far is that there's, I think a lot of parents who were worried about either COVID or about the possibility of the trip being canceled have already requested their refunds. So it won't be like last year where we were trying to refund sixty people all at once. It would be much same process, but lot smaller. We had to do it again. So Julie, I think, do you want to add to that type of your experience on the other end of it?
Um, no, it's just, it's, the thing is, is that it is such an exciting thing for the kids. And I'm just speaking from my own personal feelings is that the seniors, obviously their senior year has been destroyed and there's, this is all they had to look forward to. And of course, every single person almost except for about fifteen people backed out. So it's not really a senior trip and you only have fifteen kids, but you know, good for the kids that are going and I, I hope they have a great time. It's difficult in COVID. But yeah, it's something that these kids, they look forward to. And I mean, that's all they've been talking about for years and it's just so unfortunate. So some kids had to back out. We, you know, we had to back out and it's just, it's sad. So I hope that the next class gets to go. So it's a great, it's a great opportunity. So as far as like getting your refunds back, I mean, if you pay all that money upfront, good luck getting it back.
I don't think it should prohibit anybody and I think, you know, a year from now, it's, there's good reason to be optimistic. It's just a, you know, thing to keep in mind, I guess.
Anyone else?
I do want to say that your presentation, guys, speaks very highly of the ability of Douglas High School students to be persuasive. You guys did a great job.
I actually texted Mr. Ramado and asked him, who wrote that? That was amazing. You guys did, Ms. Novicki just chimed right in. That was awesome.
I have to jump in to say because these, these kids are in the same grade as my son and like I know their names and faces from when I used to be in the classroom when they were in like second grade. And it's just freaking me out to see how old you guys are. Very nice job.
Awesome job, guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I will need a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the Disney class zip for next year. So it's FY twenty-two.
The class of two thousand and twenty-two.
Class of two thousand and twenty-two Disney trip, second.
Motion made by Heather, a second by Julie. Roll call vote.
Dr. Trania, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thanks and have a great time and enjoy the fundraising. It's fantastic.
Congratulations. I'm glad we were able to move you guys to the front of the agenda.
Yeah.
Feel free to stay, but we know you probably have homework or other things to do.
Okay. All right, I hand it over to Dr. Viera. Obviously, a lot of people are here tonight for the school plan and we will have the comments and after he's done. But the correct or probably a more appropriate forum to ask questions pertaining to it about the details, he will be having a staff forum tomorrow from seven to eight and a community forum on Monday, March third, March eighth at six thirty. And I think that Zoom already went out and will open again. And next week, we had to add another meeting for the tenth for the budget. So can't forget about the school budget, which is also due now. So that will be next week and there will also be a forum after that, which will probably go out in the newsletter. And we're going to have to keep the comments to three minutes and on topic. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Viera.
Thank you. So I will share my screen and my slide deck with people. All right, so here we go. So this is our Douglas Public Schools return to school presentation. The next two slides are slides that you've probably seen before if you remember the presentation back in August and in September. Our goal, and this was a slide that I used back in August, our goal is to have students, faculty and staff safely return to school for in-person instruction. The goal hasn't changed since August. We want to have our kids and our staff safely back in school for in-person instruction. The other thing we talked about back in August and we've seen it play out over and over again since the school year started, information changes daily. We have to adapt. We have to pivot. We have to change. Even in putting this presentation together over the past few weeks, I've had to make several modifications and adjustments. Anything from the transportation guidance changing a month ago to the commissioner making, along with the governor, a statement back to last week to now the latest with the vaccine being available. So information is changing on a daily basis and we have to be flexible, adapt, pivot and change. And what I present today might be different than what I present tomorrow to faculty and on Monday to the community. I said this over the summer, we're going to continue to follow the science. We're going to continue to follow the data and we're going to continue to follow DESI guidelines. We're not going to go with emotion. We're not going to go with feelings. We're going to go with the science and the data. This is what we did in August and it allowed us to open schools and allowed us to stay open safely. And the DESI guidelines that were put in place have allowed us to stay open safely from September through now and will continue to follow the science and the data and the guidelines that DESI have put forth. So back this fall, we had a return to school plan. This was something we started over the summer and I presented in the school committee back in October and November. When I was presenting in October and November, people said, Paul, you're a little crazy. What are you doing talking about March and April? And I wanted to make sure we had a plan in place that when the time, the time came, we were ready to execute. So our plan back in the fall was to return in-person instruction for grades pre-K to three. Students would remain three feet apart. We would have half the kids in one room and the other half in the other. One room would have a teacher in it. The other room would have a paraprofessional in it. And the teacher would alternate between the two rooms throughout the day. We were looking at a schedule change for grades four through twelve in a two-one-two model to a two-three-three-two model, which would essentially bring kids back to school on Wednesdays. And we were looking for more special education students who qualify to return to school four days a week. That was the plan in the fall that I presented to the community and to the school committee back in October, November. What happened to the plan? We all know that from Thanksgiving through basically the last week of January, we saw a surge and the data and the virus spiked. So we had to put the plan on pause as a result of that. We also learned a lot since the fall, which has caused us to change and modify the plan. First, we found out that our safety protocols work to keep students and staff safe. What we have in place and what we put in place back in July and August and September have helped to keep our students and staff safe. Up to my knowledge, we have no evidence of transmission within the Douglas Public Schools and we have few, if any, cases of transmission across the Commonwealth. The safety protocols put in place in schools have helped to keep everyone safe. We have new information and data available to us over the past six months that have, that has caused us to modify the plan. We know in reaching out to vocational schools in other districts, they have safely brought kids back to school at three to six feet. So we now have some data of schools that have been in place for more than a few weeks at three to six feet. We have private schools across the Commonwealth that have been back full in person since the start of the school year. We have a vaccine that is now available to all teachers and staff as of today. I know that CVS is offering, if you can get on their website, the ability to be vaccinated. And as of March eleventh, it'll open up across the Commonwealth to staff. So we know a vaccine is available. Public schools have been accepted to the pooled testing program, which I will explain later on. We now have funds from SO2 to help us fund the return to school, such as the pool testing. And the transportation guidelines have changed, which have greatly helped us bring back all kids. So what is the proposed plan? The plan is to bring back as many of our pre-K to twelve students safely to school for full in-person and learning. And not just our elementary, but our middle and high school kids. All of our kids deserve the opportunity to come back to school, to be with their peers, to learn in their classrooms, to see their teachers five days a week. So this is not just an elementary program. This is not just a middle school program. This is a pre-K to twelve presentation because I want to see all kids return safely to school. The next is some of the nitty-gritty of the, the plan. The first thing is distancing. We cannot bring back all students at six feet. We just don't have the space for it. No one has the space to bring back all kids at six feet. So we're looking to bring back, student chairs will be placed at a maximum distance available, but not less than three feet. So the bare minimum, one chair will be from the next is at three feet. In some cases, as you'll see further on in this presentation, it'll be at greater than three feet. I'm going to direct you to some guidance that came out from DESI back in June and on the next slide in August. Talked about six feet being the gold standard and the standard when we were not able to wear masks. They encouraged districts to aim for six feet when feasible. At the same time, a minimal physical distance of three feet has been established when combined with other safety measures outlined in the list of safety requirements, such as wearing a mask and hand hygiene. So the guidance has been out there since, um, June, that three feet is acceptable. Most schools across the Commonwealth went with the six feet because we didn't know what it was going to be. We were nervous. We wanted to make sure that people were safe. In August, on the twenty-sixth, they also released a, some FAQs about, about distancing requirements. And they established a physical distance of three feet between students when masks are being worn is informed by evidence substantiated by guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the World Health Organization. So again, since August, there's been guidance out there that three feet is safe when combined with the additional safety measures. And you'll see a lot of them coming up here. Probably the end of January, beginning of February, a local school district did a survey of superintendents asking who was back at less than six feet. And since then, a lot more have, have joined on board. But here's a list of schools who responded to the survey. Now, just as a point of reference, there were three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth and only about a hundred people responded to the survey. So it could be more. There are more schools that are at three or four feet that aren't on this list, but I just went with people who responded to the survey. And as you can see, there are schools that have come back at three to four feet, remain there. And you have schools that started at six feet but have moved to three to four feet. So we have some data of schools and kids being back at three to four feet safely. The next is the pooled testing. If any of the nurses are here, just a huge shout out to them. They've done a phenomenal job in a short period of time putting together this pool testing program. DESI extended the pilot program through April eighteenth. It was supposed to end the end of March, but they've extended it through April eighteenth. We will be participating, all students K to twelve, in this pilot program. An informational newsletter will go out to you by the nurses, probably sometime in the next few days, to see if you're willing to participate. A decision will be made once the pilot starts to see if we continue beyond the pilot. At this time, we're just committing to the pilot. We need to see how this goes, what it looks like, how many kids participate in it, how many adults participate in it before we go and commit to going beyond the pilot. We've estimated costs of April eighteenth through the end of the school year to be at about twenty-five thousand dollars. That would come from the grant that we received, but again, we want to make sure it's effective before we commit that kind of funding to it. So with parental consent, a portion of the student population would be tested on a weekly basis. We will need your consent in order to have the kids tested. And what it is, is it's a self-administered nasal swab. So each kid would do a nasal swab and put that nasal swab into a test tube. Obviously, if parents give consent and we call a student out and they say, I'm not interested in doing it today, we're not going to force any kid to take the test. Students will then be placed into randomly into a pool. So the ten test tubes then go into one pool. That pool gets sent out to the lab in Cambridge and within twenty-four hours, we'll know if a pool tests positive. If a pool tests positive, we'll then notify the people in the pool to come down to the office and take a binex test in school. We'll get the results in fifteen minutes of who from that pool is positive. And then that individual who's positive will be sent home. There's a lot more detail in this. The nurses are putting together a fantastic informational letter to send home. We're meeting tomorrow at ten, so that should go out on Friday. I also want to be clear about the pool testing. If you're symptomatic, you need to stay home. If you're feeling sick, stay home. So this pool testing, in essence, is testing for asymptomatic students in school. Because if you're symptomatic, you should be home. If you're living with someone who's sick, you should be home. So this pool testing is testing for students and teachers who give consent, who are asymptomatic, and that's what it's going to trigger. Cleaning protocols. We've done our deep cleans twice a week on Wednesdays and Saturdays. The steep clean consists of fogging and cleaning and disinfecting surfaces. We're going to amp up our cleaning to Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays with fogging. And cleaning and disinfecting will occur on Wednesdays and Saturdays. The only day we don't have covered yet is Monday and I'm going to be working with Mr. Collette to see if there's a way we can squeeze it in. This is what he felt at this time we could commit to. We may be able to expand that to Monday to make sure we have all five days covered. High-touch-point areas will continue to be cleaned. Again, the custodians have done a fantastic job with overtime on Tuesdays and Wednesdays doing this, coming in on Saturdays, cleaning those high-touch-point areas multiple times a day, door knobs, bathrooms, railings, so people are safe. So thank you to Mr. Collette and his staff for everything they've done with the cleaning of the schools. Lunches. If we're going to come back at three feet, kids are wearing masks. We know that six feet, we need the six feet if they're not wearing masks in order to be able to have lunch. We don't have the space within our cafeterias to have kids at six feet without masks on eating lunches. So we've had to create satellite cafeterias. So in the primary school, it'll be the cafeteria in the gym. In the elementary school, it'll be the cafeteria in the library. In the middle school, it'll be the cafeteria in the library. And in the high school, it'll be the cafeteria, the lobby and room C two oh eight. The high school will also use outside once the weather gets better, as they've always done. But questions have come up about lunches and how can you fit kids in at six feet? We can't fit everyone in the cafeteria at six feet. We're going to have to expand to some satellite cafeterias. And that's our plan for lunches. Our safety measures that we talked about to make sure that three feet is, is safe. We're going to do the pool-tested pilot to again test for that asymptomatic spread. We've added additional cleanings. We're going to continue cohorting kids. So what that means is in K to eight, you're going to have the group of kids together. They're going to stay in the classroom and they're not going to be moving from classroom to classroom so we can maintain those cohorts for our classroom, for our contact tracing. We're going to minimize transitions in the hallways as much as possible. We're going to continue with masks. I can't believe there are a couple of states out there today who lifted their mask mandates, but we're going to continue with masks in schools. Hand hygiene. Wash your hands, clean your hands, sanitize your hands. We have more Purell in school than we know what to do with. We're going to continue with that. Closed contacts. We've done a great job identifying closed contacts. We're going to continue doing that. If you stay, if you're sick or you're symptomatic, stay at home. If you're living with someone who's symptomatic, stay at home. That's going to help stop the spread from coming in schools. And we're going to continue with our abundance of caution approach. Just because we're going back full-time doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to watch the data every day. We're not going to continue to track the virus on a daily basis. It doesn't mean that if something happens, we may not have to shut down a grade level or a school or the district for a period of time and pivot from full in-person to remote, or from full in-person to hybrid. We're going to continue with that abundance of caution approach. It's what's got us here to this point safely and we're going to continue it through the school year. The transportation guidance has really been a huge The transportation guidance has really been a huge, huge help to us since they changed it. Mrs. Keegan will be sending out a survey tomorrow so we can get our bus lists together. The on and off boarding guidance has not changed. You're going to walk in six feet apart and we're going to load from the front of the bus to the from the back of the bus to the front, and we're going to offload from the front to the back. Students will have assigned seats as they've always had, and they will continue to wear masks. Windows will need to be open for ventilation. The guidance is two inches or second position. On the buses here in Douglas, our second position is five inches. So all the windows will be open at five inches for kids on the bus. Please dress warmly, especially in the early months of spring. The new guidance on seating is that the, in the elementary school, capacity limitations have been lifted. So we can put three kids on a bus. And in middle and high school, we can put as many kids on the bus as we want. Typically, it's only two. If we are a red community, which as of last week, we're not, you can only do two per bench bus. But again, we could put two to three kids on the seats of the bus with these new safety protocols for transportation. The governor and the commissioner made it clear that we will continue with our Douglas Learning Academy. Families will still have the option to keep students in the D L A if they do not want to come back for in-person instruction. So if you're currently in our Learning Academy fully remote and you want to continue, that is absolutely a prerogative. If you are hybrid and you do not want to come back full in-person, you want to transition to the Learning Academy, that is fine as well. Just a word of caution that we were flexible back in the fall and throughout the year with people transitioning from hybrid to remote and remote and hybrid. For the first few weeks we're in this model, we're going to ask the people stay in the model, either Learning Academy or live for a period of time so we can get a handle on what it'll be like to have everyone back. But again, if you want to stay in the Learning Academy, you can. The next slide is a little confusing, so I'd like to walk you through it. It talks a little bit about our class sizes going forward and the distance between desks. So in our primary school, if every single kid came back and no one was remote, in kindergarten, we'd have class sizes of fifteen to sixteen, and in first grade, we'd have class sizes of eighteen. That gets us between three and a half to four feet of distancing between all students. Now, if we do have kids in the D L A, we lose a teacher because that teacher becomes a fully remote teacher. And we see our class sizes increase from eighteen, you know, from fifteen to eighteen and from eighteen to twenty. And then we'll be a little closer to that three and a half feet than we were at the four feet. In our elementary school, if every kid comes back and we don't have anyone in the D L A, we're going to have class sizes of twenty-one in the second grade, eighteen to nineteen in the third, twenty-four to twenty-five in the fourth, and twenty-four to twenty-five in the fifth. And we're going to be around that three-foot area. If we have the kids who continue in D L A, we see the decrease in the class size at the elementary school, pushing us a little closer to that four-foot mark. In the middle school, average class size is a twenty-two. If every kid came back, we're a little closer to the three-foot. Where average class size in the middle school will be less if we have the kids in the D L A, that gets us closer to the four feet. The high school's tricky to come up with an average class size because you have some teachers who have a section with twenty-seven kids and the next period, they could have a section of nine kids. So depending on how big your classes are, I think Mr. Ramado said the biggest class is twenty-seven. So that would obviously be closer to three feet, but we also have classes that have seven, eight, nine kids. And that gets us closer to the ten feet. So again, that's a look at what our class sizes would look like if we come back at three feet. The schedule. For in-person, we have no major changes in the schedule. And I put the word major changes because the schedule should be identical. Principals might have to do a small minor tweak to the schedule, whether it's a few minutes, changing a few things, but the schedule for in-person really isn't going to change. The only difference you might see is in the primary and the elementary school where specials will go from four days a week to five days a week. For our kids who are in the Douglas Learning Academy, again, no major change in the primary, middle school, or high school. There may be a need for staff and students to room and zoom at the elementary school in order to make this work. Room and zoom is another word for live streaming. So what that would mean is teachers would be standing in front of their classroom with their computers in front of them, teaching to the kids in front of them while looking, while kids are at home, live streaming into the class. We'll have more information on that in the next couple of days. Still working some things up with Mr. Bell. I know he met with staff today and has a follow-up next week with them. We're still ironing out a few things with the room and zoom. What are the next steps? What's the process look like? So as I said, this is a process that started in the fall, but really intensified a month ago, back in early February, late January, once the virus and the numbers started to go down. We saw that trend downwards and we knew it was important to get kids back in in class. There's also two paths that I want to talk about. This presentation was happening and our plan to bring kids back to school was occurring regardless of what the governor and the commissioner brought up publicly last last week. So this scheduled meeting, my presentation to come back, my plan to come back was in the works regardless of what the governor had stated back in the early last week. His proposal for regulatory changes makes it a little bit easier to bring people back and give some timelines and some parameters to it. But I want people to know that this was occurring regardless of what the governor and the commissioner said. And then the final step in the process is to meet with D T A leadership to discuss, review, and negotiate the plan. It's the law that all districts across the Commonwealth, when making a change, need to negotiate the terms and the parameters of that change. It's the law. We have those meetings with them to review, discuss, and negotiate the plan. What are some next steps? Informational pool testing transportation models for learning will be sent home to families this week. I'll follow it up probably on Friday with an all call. We're going to ask that information be sent back to us by Sunday night. I know it's a four-day turnaround, but we need that information to plan. As Mrs. Brown said, I'll be hosting a staff forum tomorrow and a community forum on Monday to review the proposed plan and be able to answer questions that people have about this plan. I've asked principals to set up both staff and community forums for the week of the eighteenth. More likely than not, it's going to be the week of the fifteenth due to the fact that everyone is out next week. It's important for principals to have that time with their staff and their communities to ask those building specific questions. What a mass break is going to look like? What's recess going to look like? How are kids going to have snack? What's lunch going to look like in each particular building? Drop-off, pickup, schedules. Those are building specific. I can speak a little bit to them. But if you have specific questions, those staff and community forums that principals will host will be able to give you that information. Back last week, Commissioner Riley said that he hoped to meet with his board sometime in March. He didn't know what date of that was, but he said it was going to be in March. He was hoping for within two to three weeks. We found out yesterday that he is meeting with his board to ask for the vote this Friday. So we could know as soon as Friday what the date is that he's stating that pre K to five will come back and his plan is for middle and high school to follow in early April. I put the asterisk there because what he's proposing is worst-case scenario, that all kids need to be back by that date. That does not mean that students in the Douglas Public Schools will not be back prior to that date. It may be the date that he's proposing, but it very well could be a date earlier than he's proposing. We'll know more in the next few days. I'm going to continue to work with the leadership team to modify the plan to ensure safety for students and staff. We're looking at this on a regular basis. And we're identifying needs. We're identifying issues. We're getting some feedback from from people, and we're going to continue to modify the plan to make sure it's safe for people to come back. We're going to meet with D T A leadership to continue to discuss and review the plan to make sure it's safe. And again, we'll continue to provide further updates at school committee meetings and through newsletters and additional venues for people to get information. That is the end of the presentation that I want to share with people. Again, I want to thank the administrative team and everyone that helped to put this together. There's a lot of planning here. There's a lot of work here. There's a lot of thought here. There's a lot that went into this to make sure that the return of our kids and staff to school is done in a safe manner. So with that said, I'd be happy to entertain questions from the committee.
Do not have any. Does anyone else from the school committee?
I don't have any questions. I just, I was wondering if I could play a news clip from that was showed on the TV last last week in regards to this.
Which one is it? What is it?
It was on Boston twenty-five.
I don't really think that's appropriate. Sorry. With that, I'll open it up to public comment and communication. We have to keep it to three minutes per person and on topic. So if you go off topic, somebody may be muted. So let's just try and remember that everybody is trying to do the right thing here. And if anybody has anything that won't be able to be answered, or you can't go to one of the community meetings or the staff meeting, we can do that right now. You just have to raise your hand. If you know how to do that.
I am scrolling through to see if any hands are raised.
You can also write in the, type in the chat if. Don't see anything. So if you can't do either of those, you can speak out as well.
I have a question. Hello?
Yep. You have to state your name and your address, please.
Frank Altensmith, Hillway, Douglas. So basically, when Mr. Riley this Friday, if he says that the kids, he wants them back to school by next, the Friday after, are the kids going back next Friday if he says that's when he expects them back to school?
If I just want to make sure I understand your question. Are you stating that if Commissioner Riley makes the statement and is able through his board to change the regulations that state that time on, that hybrid learning and remote learning effective this date will no longer count? Now, whatever the date is, will students need to be back in school? Is that the question?
Yes.
To the best of my knowledge, the answer is we would have to comply with that. Yes, sir.
Right. So if he says Friday, that effective immediately, the kids, I want the kids back in school, we're doing away with hybrid, then so starting Monday, we would have a plan for our kids. They would be back in school Monday.
So the plan, the plan, the plan's already in place. I don't think he's going to, again, his plan was for early August. I don't think he's going to come out on Friday and say in three days, you need to come back. But to the point of the question is, when when the commissioner states that as of whatever the date is, hybrid and remote learning will no longer count towards time on learning and kids need to be back for full in-person, or put some parameters around it, for instance, you know, K to five on this date, middle school following, then high school, we will need to be back or else we will not meet time on learning requirements.
Right. So at this point, now that the president and also the governor and the Riley has said teachers are now allowed to go get vaccines, how many teachers today got vaccines? How many are going to get vaccinated this week? So we have no more excuses as to why, because that's their biggest concern is the vaccine. And we know we can do three feet. The kids are failing miserably. We all know this. We just want to make sure now they can all get the vaccine. So they need to be on deck twenty-four seven to get those vaccines now.
Mr. Frankel.
So there's no more excuses.
Your question been answered?
No, it has not been answered. It's not been answered at all.
There's a community forum on Monday.
That's, that's my, my question wasn't answered, though. You just asked if my question was.
That's an unanswerable question. Anyone else?
Well, just to clear my playback, you mentioned early August as the, as what Commissioner Riley has mentioned.
Early April.
Early April. I just wanted to clarify.
Correct. The commissioner said early April, he had not, as of the last communication that we had had from him, he had not put a definitive date on it. He had just defined it as early April. And just for people to understand, time on learning and what he's doing is he, every school district needs to meet time on learning requirements. You have to be in school a certain number of days out, certain number of hours a day, days a year. And if you fail to meet time on learning, what they're proposing is that we will lose for every day that we don't meet time on learning, we will lose one one hundred eightieth of our funding, which again, if you go two, three weeks, is a substantial portion of our funding. And then you're not meeting time on learning, and then you have to make that time up either by extending the school day, going on weekends, or extending the school year. So it would be in everyone's best interest to do it. The difficulty of the question is that, yes, we would have to go back. But if we didn't go back, what would end up happening is for every day we're not back, we will lose one one, one one hundred eightieth of our funding from the state, and we would need to make up the hours and the days at some point. Which is a position no one wants to be in. Jeff's iPhone has a hand up, I believe. Or is someone just testing out the system?
Jeff's iPhone appears to be muted, so.
Okay.
I'm not raising my hand.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff Wettin, two twenty-eight Main Street in Douglas.
Oh, hi, Jeff. Can everybody? Repeat me a name, please.
I guess my question is, what is the estimated timetable for Douglas to return to school outside of what the state's proposed plan is?
I can't answer that today. I'll have a better idea in the next few days to that. As I said, part of the process is I need to sit with the Douglas Teachers Association and have a dialogue with with them. We're meeting tomorrow. We'll have a clearer picture in the next few days. One of the questions that came up as part of this was how long would it take us to execute a plan? We can put this in place. Once we have the information, we're going to send a survey out today. Once we send that survey out, we'll get everything back on Monday. And once we have that information, it'll probably take us about five days to be able to execute the plan in full. So it all depends what happens over the next couple of weeks. But it'd be premature for me to say when we're coming back until I have the opportunity to sit with the Douglas Teachers Association and have a conversation with them.
Anyone else?
Joanna Pelican has her hand up.
I, my question is in regards to the students definitely need to go back, and it's the best thing for the students and to get them back in school and doing things that they're used to. My concern is the safety. I'm going to send my student back full-time. She's going to go back into her classes with all of her classmates. And as we all know, yes, they said teachers can get vaccinated, but that's not going to happen anytime soon because people that are sixty-five can't even get vaccinated yet, never mind staff. So what happens if we, if the, if staff get sick? You know, I feel like we're shorthanded as it is in a lot of different areas. And if a staff member gets sick and then, or you have three staff members that are sick or four, what's the plan at that point? We, you know, what are we going to do at that point? Because then it becomes a safety issue for the students, having them all in the building and being understaffed.
The plan is the same as it's been since September. We, if, if we get to the point where we have too many teachers. We, if, if we get to the point where we have too many teachers out as a result of COVID, and we need to pivot from a, like we did from a hybrid model to remote. If we need to pivot from an in-person model to hybrid, or from an in-person model to remote, whether it's for one day, four days, or two weeks, we'll do it. I think I said that at the beginning. We're gonna continue with our abundance of caution approach. And if we need to pivot from a remote, from an in-person model to either a hybrid or remote, we'll do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Can do a few more.
Let's see if anyone has a hand up. There's a question from a J game. I'm, I'm gonna need you to identify your full name and your address in the, in the chat.
Sure. It's John Gamlin, 12 Old Carriage Lane.
Thanks. Sorry about that. So the question is, how many teachers have tested positive for COVID as a result of being exposed in school? I think I said earlier in the, in the presentation, we have zero evidence of in-school transmission. So we have not been able to link any positive cases to the school.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more, and then we're gonna need to wrap it up.
I, I just want to ask a quick question too. It's, I know that in the survey, you had asked if people would like to volunteer, and I know some, a lot of people responded to that. Is there a way that people can volunteer? I would be for it. I would actually do it. If you need people to cover classes so that teachers can go out and get vaccinated, like, do you have enough supply of substitute teachers? Because I, I bet you anything, there's a ton of parents that would love to step in.
You, you, you just, we are always looking for substitute teachers. So if people want to apply to be a sub, even if it's just for a short period of time, we'd be more than happy to do that. Just contact any of the building principals. That'd be fantastic. And again, there's a lot, there's a lot coming out with, with the, with the vaccinations. CVS has them available. I, I believe now a few people have been successful in, in logging onto CVS. They're really looking at these regional sites. I sent a letter to Senator Fatman and State Representative McKenna yesterday, asking for them to push for more regionalized sites and making them more, more local. So what a lot of commute, what a lot of other states are doing is they're doing something along the lines of, teachers are being vaccinated these two days in this one site and shutting down the district for a date in order to be vaccinated. We'll have to wait to see what the governor does with the vaccinations. I know they're looking at part of the regionalization plan and making dedicating one day a week to staff to get vaccinated. I don't know if it would be during the school day or after the school day, but we'll have to see more information, we'll have to gather more information as it comes out. But thank you for that.
Yep. Thanks.
Last call. Don't see any.
All right. And again, just to remind staff, I'll be doing this again tomorrow at seven o'clock. Presentation will be similar, probably identical unless new information happens between now and then. But again, after we finish the presentation, we'll have time for questions, questions and answers. I think the presentation, I timed it within about 30 minutes. I think tomorrow when I present to staff, it'll be about 20, which will leave us about 40 minutes for Q and A. For the community, same thing. When I do this Monday at 6:30, probably taking about 20 minutes to go through it. Might have to add some slides. A lot will happen between now and Monday. And then we'll open it up for 40 minutes for questions and, and answers. And then look for that email from principals for individual building-based meetings. Maybe next week, more likely than not, the week of the 15th, because we are, we're all out, I think, every day next week. All right.
We know your schedule.
All right. So thank you for that. And thank you for all the people who came out. It's great to see. I think we had 75 participants. Next is our third and final reading of our Title IX policy. We're just gonna have Ms. Urquhart briefly again, go over it, see if there are any questions from the committee. And then in our consent agenda, we will vote that policy in.
So I guess at this point, I'd just be looking for any questions from the school committee. I know that, that we've had presentations on it, so if you feel comfortable, I, I would be looking for a motion for approval.
Do we do that now or the consent agenda?
We'll, we'll do it at the consent agenda, just to keep everything.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Next on the agenda is our five-year technology plan update. Donna Suze has been working diligently with, with a team this year. With technology this year, she's been at the forefront with computers and Chromebooks going in and out, and iPads going in and out. We've been fortunate with part of the grant in order to be able to add a lot of technology to the, to the schools and to get in the hands of kids. So I'll turn it over to her for her five-year tech plan update.
Okay, I'm gonna just share my screen with the spreadsheet here. Okay. Oops, I was a stupid bar in my way. All right. So I had presented this last year. It's just a rough roadmap of what we will be needing to replace and keep up to date over the next five years. With the budget grants, I mean, we actually were made a good dent in this, this year. So what's in front of you here is for this year, one, which we were able to purchase these Chromebooks, replace all the iPads, the iPad 4s that are outdated. Purchased a couple of iMacs. The teacher PCs at the high school and office apps, PCs at the high school, we were able to do at the end of the year last year because we got, it's a rural school grant. So we've made some progress with that. Nope, sorry. There we go. Central office computers replaced with laptops from the grant. So overall, we've got $139,000 of items that we completed or taken off the list, mostly because of the grant funding. For year two, which would be next year, I had MacBooks for teachers. We were able to do that this year with grant funding. We were able to move some of the MacBooks that we took from the teachers to the paraprofessionals or whatever. So the paras all have some kind of device that's useful now. This is the TV production classroom. We're hoping to replace those next year. It's currently in the budget, whether it will survive. While various iterations between now and the approval, we'll see. MacBook Air card is something that we need to reevaluate. That's at the middle. Oh, my things that messed up. This MacBook Air card is actually up at the middle school, not at the high school, as it's showing here. Battery, I need to talk when we get a new principal and we get the new, and I gotta talk with the STEM teachers, see if it's even still needed. We had iPads at the time. I don't, when we bought that. So that's why that's reevaluated. So we'll see. Oh, wait a minute. Classroom projectors at the high school, again, those are like all original to the building, many of them. I've replaced some of them with inexpensive projectors, but about 20 of them are still the originals. They're gonna have to be replaced. And this cost is to replace them all with short throw projectors, which also requires some wiring, which is why that cost is so high. Because the newer computers do not have the same interfaces as the old projectors. So there's some wiring involved. Most of this has stayed the same as what you showed, I showed you last year. $50,000 for upgrading wiring, network infrastructure at the primary school. That's very outdated. The Chromebooks, we'd like to start replacing on like a third of them a year, to keep them turning over so that they're not all dead at once. High school lab PCs. So nothing, we haven't touched anything on this third year yet. Again, next, the fourth year, replacing more Chromebooks. Projectors at the elementary school and the middle school are gonna be starting to go, probably. They're older, so I've got those in there to start thinking about replacing those again, so we don't have to do them all in one fell swoop. And fifth year, which is just kind of a, five years out from in tech language is kind of way out there. So this is just kind of a, I know I want to keep doing the Chromebooks every, you know, a third every year to try to keep those currently constantly refreshed. And again, the middle school projectors, and they, the middle school projectors will put in a year after the elementary school projectors. So we do the elementary one year, we do the middle the next to keep them up to date. These numbers are all rough numbers. They are not including infrastructure, not including wiring service. This is just basically keeping the technology that's in the students' hands usable and current. So, so that's where we are with that from last year. So if there's any questions.
Could you just go back to year one, Donna, please?
Sure. I know, I had kind of zipped past.
That's all right.
Okay.
So again, you, you can see for this year, and then I'll have her scroll over to, to next year. A lot of work's been done. A lot of it because of grants, a lot of it because of COVID. But we've been able to, and Donna and her team have done a tremendous amount of work to take all this stuff, repurpose it, get it out and get it in the hands of kids. So kudos to you and your team. Zach and Scott to get this done. There's a lot of work to get this out in the hands of kids and teachers. And you can see, what's the next slide for next year? Again, we're able to get a lot of things done through the grant, both from COVID and through some, some underfunding sources. So really excited about being able to update our technology infrastructure and get in the hands of kids and teachers. Current, up-to-date, fast and workable pieces of technology. So this is awesome. Thank you, Donna, for what you've done.
Thank you, Donna. It was a very daunting list pre-COVID.
Yeah, we made a good dent in here.
You did.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Next on the list, we're gonna talk about Fall Two Sports. So the MIAA, as a result of COVID, took the fall season divided in half. Half the sports happened in the fall when they should have in September, and the other half are happening now in what's called Fall Two, which started, I think, within the past couple of weeks. So Mary, a quick update on Fall Two, it may be a little foreshadowing into Spring.
Okay, so, um, thanks. We started volleyball on Monday and our co-op football with Sutton. We have 11 boys traveling to Sutton to play football. We have 32 girls playing volleyball. And right at this point, we have indoor track at nine. Where indoor track starts officially March 15th, so we're giving it a few more days to try to get more kids. And then Mr. Mano and I are gonna have to have a conversation to try to figure out why kids aren't playing. One male athlete is playing football because some of the kids are, where it's got moved instead of track, it's now football. So they've chosen football and two female athletes have chosen volleyball versus the indoor track. But you have to understand the indoor track, it's all outside. So they practice outside. And their track meet will be one, if weather permitting, and it'll be outside, but we're still calling it indoor track. So we're gonna see where that takes us.
So you can see why kids may not want to participate. You do all, you're doing indoor track, but running outside in the cold and in the snow. And you're, you have one chance to compete.
Well, maybe two. We're optimistic too. We're gonna take it, we'll wait till over the weekend and hopefully we'll get some more kids. Because I would really not like to see any kids not have the opportunity to do something that they like. So the next thing is that with the bus, I have a question about the bus that I learned from you today. Does that affect traveling as athletics? We could put more kids on a bus going to away games now?
I believe so, yes. Let's get confirmation tomorrow, but I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have two new coaches for volleyball. They're taking over the program. And the first two days of trials went pretty well. And the other fantastic thing, get fantastic, is they're allowing, the district athletic committees have voted to allow fans at volleyball games. When we met on Monday as a pod, that hadn't been decided, so we're gonna meet on Monday again. And we're gonna decide as a pod, if we think that's a good idea, and if we say yes, then it goes back to the districts. And we're, we've been kind of following an all or none. We're in this together. So if, you know, Sutton doesn't allow fans, then, you know, we all probably won't. Some of the smaller schools for social distancing, like Hope Dale and Bethany Christian, their gyms are tiny. So they may have an issue. So it may just be home fans, which I think is a bonus, and we'll still be broadcasting the games. Maddie Mooney has again, decided to stay on with us and be our videographer for the home contest, which is awesome. So that's Fall Two in a nutshell, and it runs through April vacation. And then fall, then spring sports start April 26th. So, and it, the MIAA had a meeting last night and they voted down the tournaments because it would have extended the seasons till July 3rd. And that's an awful long time to ask the athletes to keep coming, you know, the coaches, it's, that's, it's a long time when school gets out to keep playing athletics. So there're gonna be sectional tournaments for the traditional spring sports. So it will definitely, you know, go into latter June, but it's still a great opportunity for the kids to play. So that's, that's all I got at this point in time.
Ms. Soko, with 10 or 11 kids playing football, how many more do we need to have our own team?
Well, 11 more would be great.
11 more would be a minimum.
That's the most we've had in a long time, a couple of years. So that's, that's good.
Incredible. It's a lot of kids.
But I think this six seniors maybe. So, but does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. Couple things. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Soko, for all that you do for the kids for sports. It is so appreciated by myself and by many, many other people. And maybe you should recruit Emma Wall to be a spokesperson for why outdoor running is such a, is not that bad because she runs in all weather types. Anyway, that's all.
Yes.
I have a quick question.
I do want to point out too that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
There will no be, I will not be doing play-by-play for the volleyball game. I've hung up the mic for the year. So none of my, my color commentary, I'm afraid.
That's okay.
So, quick question. For indoor sports, could you tell us a little bit about what the cleaning protocols are after that? And has it been discussed within like the pods about how that could change or if there are fans?
I believe that, well, the protocols for basketball and volleyball will be the same as far as how we handle it here at the school. If we allow fans, then we'd have to clean the bleachers. That'd be another additional cleaning between games. The JV games are gonna go first at 4:30. They'll play two out of three, and then the varsity games. They each have their own set of volleyballs, so they don't touch, they don't share the volleyballs. And then we'd have to, I'd have to sit down with Mr. Mano and come over, go over a way that we're gonna have the fans enter the gym. I'll have to mark the bleachers where they're gonna sit. And then once they have their designation. going to sit. And then once they have their designated seats, they're going to stay there, have to wear masks. And then when everybody leaves the gym, I will probably just spray or we'll wipe them down like we've done during basketball or use the backpack sprayer and spray the bleachers, let it sit, you know, for five or 10 minutes and then wipe it down. So that's
So you do, you do the spraying right now, right?
Mr. Romano, myself, Katie Malo, whoever's in the gym, they all, it's, it's, it takes a village. And I have to say, you know, and that's how we operate at the high school is everybody chips in when we need to. So.
So I kind of asked that on purpose, just to give two seconds to, you know, sort of highlight, these are all the things that people like Mrs. Soko are doing behind the scenes. Somebody's got to be measuring the room to see how many desks you can fit in there. You know, I give you all a lot of credit for all the work that you've done. It's a hard year for everybody. And, and I hope you know that the committee and, yeah, we really appreciate all the work you've done. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Shawna, you see if your hand raised?
You're muted.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make note that I am a fortunate parent of a basketball player. And thanks to Mrs. Soko and Katie Malo and Mr. Romano and Mr. Vega, the games were enjoyable. I was fearful of sitting in the living room and watching the games. And before we upgraded the cable and I couldn't tell if it was my daughter or Morgan Bertham, Mr. Romano was announcing it. So I knew that it was Katie that hit the three-point shot and not Morgan at that point. It, that was, it was a top-notch effort up at the high school and, and I can't tell you how appreciative I am. And I can't imagine emceeing volleyball either. So I, I would hang up, hang the mic up as well. But it, it was awesome. From a parent's point of view, it was absolutely awesome. So thank you.
I think people could tell I was having fun.
You were. You were having a good time.
Mary, you have something else?
I was just going to say one other point is that we, you can't see it on the, on when we, when we show the games, but at the scores table, you know, our two clock operators, Kathy and Alex, they had a shield between them two. So there was nothing, but there was like a makeshift shield. And then Mr. GNA's class made a special one for, for volleyball because there'll be two people sitting at the table and he thought he could do it a little bit better than what I had brought, brought in. So his class made a wonderful barrier between the Mrs. Pellican, she's our scorekeeper, and Caitlin Bonin will be our clock operator for the games. So they're protected, I guess my point is.
Anyone else?
All right. That's my presentation for, for tonight. Again, thank you to everyone who came and thank you for your support. I do appreciate it. I think we all do. We're excited for what the next three, four months are going to bring our kids in school. So I appreciate your patience and we look forward to communicating what the next steps are shortly. With that said, I'll turn it back over to the chair for the rest of the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the school committee and subcommittee report.
Okay, so I signed warrant 32, school lunch 2021 for, dated for February 5th, 2021, for $4,255.94. Warrant 32, school year 21, dated February 4th, 2021, for $386,915.89. Warrant 33, school lunch 21, dated February 12th, 2021, for $685.29. There's a bunch. Warrant 33, school year 21, dated February 11th, 2021, for $15,112.48. Warrant 34, school year 21, dated February 18th, 2021, for $167,677.84. And warrant 34, school lunch 21, dated February 19th, 2021, for $5,845.57. Nothing unusual.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, the January 6, 2021 meeting minutes.
I believe from a note that I have here from Lauren, the January 6 minutes were already approved. I don't think they're in your packets, or I think we move on to the January 20th and the February 3 meeting minutes.
Nobody sees anything on the January 20th. I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, January 20th, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather. Roll call vote.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. Moving on to the February 3, 2021 meeting minutes. Motion, if nobody says anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 23, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather. Roll call vote.
Thank you, Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. We already did the class trip. So we're moving on to surplus technology equipment for disposal.
Courtney, are you going to take this? Mrs. Keegan?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Souza provided a listing of obsolete and unusable, non-functional technology items that were included along with the agenda item summary. And we're looking for approval to dispose of them. There's no financial impact and the surplus items will be removed free of charge by a recycling company. And she did provide the listing of all of the items. Does anyone have any questions?
We'll be looking for a motion to move to approve the disposal of obsolete and non-functional technology items of no value listed on the attached spreadsheet entitled Technology Disposal List, School Committee Meeting, March 3, 2021.
So moved.
Motion made by Becky.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Roll call votes.
Becky Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be moving on to preschool tuitions for next year.
So I'm going to turn it over momentarily to Ms. Sosha, Ms. Keegan. We have, this is just a conversation, some information to share with you with hopefully a vote at the end to look at our preschool tuition rates. We have not increased our tuition since FY17. It's been five years. A lot of changes have happened since then. So I'll have Cindy talk a little bit about the programmatic changes, what's happened in the past five years. And Ms. Keegan will give an overview of what the proposed financial changes are and why we're doing that. So Ms. Sosha, you waited a long time patiently for this. So.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So as most of you know, we offer two programs, one for three-year-olds and one for four-year-olds. Our three-year-old program, we offer two, three, or five half-day options for parents and families. The four-year-olds are offered two, three, five, full or half. And I can tell you, over the years, the full day has been increasing each year. So this past year, if we didn't have COVID, we had one room full of just full day four-year-olds and one room with the overflow, say with Tuesday, Thursday options. So that is what parents are looking for. We are curriculum-based. We use the same curriculum throughout the building. So it's fluent throughout. We use a foundations program for letters and spounds in preschool K and one. So it's an easy transition. We do follow the mass early education standards and guidelines. And you know that if someone's been in preschool for three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and they go to kindergarten, they practically own the building already. They know the custodian's name, they know my name, they know Mrs. Purvis, they know where the office is, they know the gym, they know the cafeteria. So the transition for us students and for parents is so much smoother, it's less stressful, less tears on opening day, things like that. So it's quite an advantage for parents and Douglas people to take advantage of our program. And socially, the, the kids, even now, even with COVID, they, they are talking to each other, they are working together. I mean, this conversation between these four-year-olds, three-year-olds, it's, it's really fun to watch. Our staff, I can't say enough about our preschool staff. They are amazing. So we are anxious to get back into where we were before COVID because we were full up. There are over 100 on the census of three-year-olds and four-year-olds that are eligible to come to the program. We certainly can't accommodate 100, but our numbers were up there. We were full. And it's always a scheduling. So we're hoping to get our registration going after tonight's meeting and the rates and things like that so that we can do registration. We look at it to see how many full day requests do we have. And we try to accommodate almost everybody's first choice if possible. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Keegan.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sosha. So again, to reiterate what was just stated, when the program, you know, due to the enthusiasm with the primary school staff, Mrs. Sosha and her, her preschool staff, you know, expanding the program has been, been phenomenal. I think the parents are very appreciative, the students are very appreciative. And like she said, the numbers really did skyrocket. And we were on a trajectory to continue that way. And then COVID came along. So, but we all know we're going to go back to the way it was. So that being said, to reiterate what Mr. Vera said, it has been five years. In your packet, we did include several items with regard to finances in our proposal. Mrs. Sosha did put together a preschool tuition rate comparison of area preschools for you to take a look at. And, you know, it does vary a lot, as I, as I did indicate in our agenda item summary. And, you know, some of the things I do want to point out in some of these districts, for instance, Milford, it's probably more likely that they, they do receive more funding in state grants and, and other things due to demographics and things. So maybe they can be a little bit lower. And, you know, the, as you can see, it does vary with regard to program offerings and such, but it does at least give you an opportunity to see what the rates are in the area. Certainly our rates and even our proposed very modest increase of 10% is certainly in line. I do want to let you know that the preschool program is funded by three funding sources. And primarily it is the tuition fees, which goes under volume fund, the general fund. And we also receive each year a very small grant that comes in at just under $10,000. But there has been more and more needing to be funded by the general fund in recent years. So we are recommending a very modest increase of 10%. And what that would mean for families, if the school committee did approve our recommendation, actually for, for the yearly estimated revenue, additional revenue would be approximately $17,560 for, for the overall program for the year. And as far as for families, for instance, the five-day full program, it would be a monthly increase of $60. Three days full, it would be a monthly increase of $36. Two days full, $24. Five days half, it would be a monthly increase of $30. Three days half, $22. And two days half, $16. So it's very, and we feel it's very, very modest, particularly seeing that it has been five years. Now, one of the, we did, Mr. Vera, Mrs. Sosha and I did meet several times to discuss this. And one of the problems is, as you know, where, you know, during these COVID times, we did, you know, there were, you know, the preschool itself, and as far as I was feeling comfortable coming and, and attending, as Mrs. Sosha said this year, it's kind of hard to look at the data from this year with regard to revenue. It really is very difficult to do this. So we are recommending that modest increase for next year. And then I, I would recommend that we look at it again towards the end of next year as well. And look at the whole entire program, see how we've recovered, recouped from the financial effects of this mostly entire year of COVID. And also the end of last year, there was quite a financial effect too, that the general fund needed to, to make up for. So I didn't know if there were any additional questions regarding the financial aspects or for Mrs. Sosha regarding the programmatic. No questions? Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Questions, I'll be looking for a motion. Want to take a stab at it?
I found it. Thank you.
A little complicated.
Thank you for writing it out for us.
Absolutely. Are you going Heather or am I?
Which one? You want me to do this one? You can do the next one?
Sure.
I move to approve that with a 10% increase in the preschool tuition beginning in FY22, FY21 to 21, 22 school year, the following will be the new, the new preschool tuition rates for five days full, $6,600. Three day full, $3,960. Two days full, $2,640. Five days, half days, $3,300. Three days, half days, $2,420. Two days, half days, $1,760.
Julie, Heather?
Second.
Kelly, roll call votes.
Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Title IX policy. Or is it six? Four?
Title IX.
Aye. Single digit.
I'm trying to find it as well.
Any other questions on that? Is there wording?
I didn't see any wording anywhere.
So we, Ms. Urquhart, so we need a motion to accept the Title IX policy as presented, correct?
The updated Title IX policy as presented.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the updated Title IX policy as presented, third reading on, oh God, what's the date? March 3, 2021.
By Kelly?
Second.
Second by Heather. Roll call vote.
Becky Ternia, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, an aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Vary, you had something, a donation?
I didn't want, I had a donation that came to Mr. Bell across Mr. Bell's desk. I want to read you the letter. It's, it brought a smile to my face when Mrs. Keegan shared it with me today. It says, Dear Mr. Bell, my name is Eileen Francis. I am Parker and Tate's grandmother. Parker celebrated his 10th birthday on February 4 of this year. In the spirit of giving to others in need, I asked Parker, if I was going to give a donation of money in your name to celebrate your birthday, to whom would you like me to give the money? I included a list of recipients with the option of any other organization of his choice. Since he is a voracious reader, he thought it over and asked if I could donate money to his school for the library. I said, of course. So nearly Francis, Eileen Francis is presenting a check to the Douglas Elementary School in the amount of $100 in order to add to our school library. So not only a big thank you to her, but a thank you to her grandson. So, um, not only a big thank you to her, but a thank you to her grandson, who thought of the school in adding books to the library as a donation. So obviously, we need the school committee to accept this donation. Mr. Bell, I see you smiling over there. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Parker and Tate are great kids. I thought, I, I need, I can't wait to find Parker and tell him thank you. And we'll send a letter also. I, I want to get a hold of Grandma, but I, it's, it's awesome that they're thinking of the school and we'll, we'll put it to good use for some books in the library.
So we just need a, a, a motion to approve the $100 donation towards the Douglas Elementary School library.
I move to approve the $100 donation in honor of Parker Matthews to the Douglas Elementary School library.
Second.
Motion made by Becky, second by Julie?
Julie.
Roll call vote.
Thank you, Ternia. Aye.
Kelly, Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. That's a great one. Thank you.
That's a good one.
Okay, moving on to school business and operations managers' reports.
Okay, so this evening, I do actually have some transfers and reclasses for you. I have FY2021 budgetary transfer number four. And these are all from administrators, and I'm sure they'll be very happy to see these finally being brought to you. So your budgets can be updated. So does anyone have any questions on any of these?
I'll be looking for a motion to approve the FY2021 budgetary transfers number four for the school committee meeting, March 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
Motion made by Kelly.
Second.
Second.
Second by Becky. Roll call vote.
Thank you, Ternia. Aye.
Kelly, Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. The next thing I have is the FY2021 reclassifications number eight. And the first group of them was just confusion between middle school and district-wide, as far as the account it needed to go in. Same thing with the next four. The nurse, because that was actually a move of a nurse. And then the following ones are all going from the general fund into the school choice account. And those are all related to building maintenance from the primary school.
Any questions? Not? I'll be looking for a motion to approve FY2021 reclassifications number eight, school committee meeting, March 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
By Kelly. Roll call vote.
Thank you, Ternia. Aye.
Kelly, Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it for this evening.
Okay. Does anybody have any topics not anticipated? There's no need for executive session, so I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the March 3rd, 2021, school committee meeting at 8:33 PM.
Motion made by Becky.
Second.
Second by Heather. Roll call vote.
Thank you, Ternia. Aye.
Kelly, Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you, everyone, and we will see you next week, March 10th.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.